Okay, so we start the meeting with a call to order. So this is the Town of North Stonington Sustainability Committee Zoom Special Meeting, August 3, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Alexis Khan presents.
Hello, Ballast Trustee.
John Lindsay.
Captain.
Greg Dula.
Okay, great. So I'll share this. I wanted to just start with some updates in terms of progress that we've made. So I had my weekly Tuesday call with the fellows and with Bailey, who's the admin at the Town of North Stonington today. And so the fellows prepared a really helpful tool, which I will share on the screen, but I will also send after the fact to everybody. But basically breaks down all of the action items. Again, this is what we've already made, you know, we've submitted in the past. So this is not every single action item that's on the sustainable CT action item, but rather just those that we have attempted last year and that we either have completed and decided to be renumbered or something like that or something that we still have some gap in order to get full credit for. We didn't get it last year. And there's also some changes in the way that from 2021 to 2020, year over year, some changes in the way that the action items are structured, whether there's an additional worksheet or things of that nature. So they put together this handy Excel or Google Sheet. It's actually, I should say, not Excel. And let me see if I can share this. Basically, it breaks it down into each action category. So, you know, based on a different numbering system. So equity is number one, economy is number two, natural resources is number three. And it indicates whether it's green means, you know, it's good to go. They've already completed any resubmission information. The fellows took care of that and therefore were good. Or sort of similar to how they originally had done it with, that we had looked through last time with kind of that orangey color being, we didn't get full credit and this is the reason why. And so in order to get the full credit for this year, we need to take some action. And so he's also indicated the changes that are needed. And, you know, some actions already been taken on RISA's side. But also he's created this kind of box where we can assign according to who's working on this. So just from an organizational standpoint, we can kind of pinpoint the exact person who's going to be working on that particular item. So I think it's helpful from the standpoint of like, I know last, after last meeting, there was a certain amount of allocation of, okay, I'm going to work on this and you're going to work on that. But I think this might be a great way to just kind of, if we can fill it in and see who's working on what, then at least we have a way of tracking who's responsible for it. There are some of these items. For example, we were talking about today, section five, I believe. We had, oh, Plan 5.7. This is up on the screen, for example. It was something that we went for last year. 5.7 Plan for Long-Term Recovery, Complete a Project on the Work Plan of the Long-Term Recovery Committee. So we had last year submitted, had gone to the, in our certification process, said that the school reopening, we submitted that as this should count towards long-term recovery because it looked at a lot of the same considerations that we thought would be contained in sort of a plan for long-term recovery. And the point is that after discussing this with the fellows, that we really would need to have a dedicated committee that's not just for school reopening, but rather long-term recovery more generally. So something like this. I should actually change the color to mean that we're not even going to, you know, we kind of know that we're out of the running for it. So it's not even worth kind of allocating responsibilities to somebody because it's, you know, even though we submitted for it the past and we know what needs to be done in order to do that, to get credit for it, we won't be in a position to be able to get credit for it. So there are some of those that, you know, are really a different category altogether. But for some of these, like inventory and assess historic resources, for example, I had reached out to Nita about kind of updating a few of these to get maybe a little bit more credit. So things like that where, okay, I can even fill myself in because I'm working with Nita on that and did last year. So I kind of know where that stands. So I think it's really helpful that he put it into this kind of format. And I just got this today, so it's kind of brand new to me. But I think it's helpful for us to kind of navigate as we're trying to kind of close the gap in some of the easier action items to address. And then the other thing that he shared, which was helpful, was, do you see this on my screen? It says, "North Stonington Potential Action Review Summer 2021." Okay. So this is things that, again, he thinks that, both the fellows, I should say, think that they're possible for us to complete or, you know, it's kind of below hanging fruit again. Some subactions that we've already completed but show possibilities where we can receive more points for those subactions. So just to kind of boost, like, we have sort of the first run or first pass of that spreadsheet of things that we can just try to close the gap on to get our points up a little bit higher. But then this is to kind of boost our points. And I think he indicated that if we got full credit for everything on this, that it was 85. I didn't back check his math, but, you know, it's an additional 85 just for these. So some of them, I know that Bailey is working on things related, like we were just talking today on the call about some stop signs that are being incorporated into kind of making it more safe to walk around, like the traffic-related element. So I think some of these she's working on. But, you know, something like holding a sustainability event. You know, they've named things like the Garden Club Plant Sale or the Summer Agricultural Fair that if we can kind of put together some information on those, that that could kind of, again, get us some points towards holding a sustainability event. So I think these two documents are really helpful and kind of giving us a little bit of a roadmap towards where we can get some additional points. The other thing that I will mention is that unfortunately, Mike Ergo had put together, and I'm going to share my screen for this, a, just kind of like a brain dump, in all honesty, of different things that have been going on in the town that he thought had some sort of tie-in to sustainability and thought might have some applicability and where we could maybe just show that these that have already been in process could be, you know, could be used in our, towards our action items for this certification process. And unfortunately, in reviewing the fellows' feedback on these items that Mike had proposed, it looks like a lot of them were not quite there yet in terms of having completed any of these to the point where then we could submit it for credit. So again, like Plan to Make Route 2 Multimodal, it won't qualify until the project has been completed. So a lot of it was, well, this would be great for our future certification cycle, but it needs to be completed. The same thing about the shelter for the animals. It, you know, it's not eligible until it's been built. And so that's the feedback. I'll just kind of share this because that's what I've been getting on a lot of things is we also submitted a plan for, this might have been the Route 2 plan, but it was something for the PowerPoint that had been presented, I think, at a Board of Selectmen meeting. And the same thing, we submitted that, like, look what's being considered. And they said, this is great, but until it's done, you can't get credit for it. So that's just something that we'll have to keep in mind that while it's great that we're working on it and this could be consideration for future sustainable CT cycles, that a lot of this, until you're done, you can't get credit for it. So that's a little bit of feedback for what we kind of have been trying to pass by them to see if we could get consideration for this year. And they've been like, eh, not really. It sounds like the Tri-Town Kayak Trail actually was one of the ones that they were saying, well, we kind of already submitted something for that in the past. So there's sometimes where we go after something that we're like, oh, look what we did on this topic, but we've already gotten credit for it and already have the points on something else that still fulfilled that subaction. And therefore it's sort of like, well, you can submit this new thing for that, but then you're not getting additional points for it. So we run into that sometimes, too. But actually, while we're on the topic of the Tri-Town Kayak Trail, Tula, you just mentioned that Bill was presenting at a Board of Selectmen meeting about that. So I don't know if you wanted to share that. I don't know if Craig, you're aware of this update.
Yeah. So Bill presented, and I missed the beginning because we couldn't hear. And then he did repeat a little bit of what he said, but basically they're working tomorrow to clear a path. I guess when you go down Boone Bridge, at the bridge before it turns into Westerly, there's a dirt path on the right. And I guess that's where they're clearing. And he did, I think he handed the Board of Selectmen a brochure. I think he, I think he said they're at the bank and maybe the library where I can't recall where else they have, like, their trail maps and stuff. There should be a map, I believe, for this. So I don't know if you can use that.
And I do know that, Tula and I were just talking about the fact that Bill is back from vacation. I was on a call with Christine yesterday and she was like, oh, Bill just stopped into my office. And I was like, Bill Ricker, he's back. Because I know there's a lot of things, you know, such as the kayak trail, that we need to connect with him for sort of more details on some of the items that we were looking to submit for sustainable CT credit. So I reached out to him last night. And so I'm sure he's going to be hearing a lot from us, given his crucial contribution in this department. But I do know that he's back. So again, you know, Halloween Parade and Christmas Parade, unless it's, unless there's some sort of tie that shows that it was a sustainability event, you know, it has to show some sort of element of sustainability. So unfortunately, there didn't seem to be a lot in terms of opportunities for new things that Mike thought of that would really just fit right in perfectly. So I think, you know, I think it's just going to be a matter of if, you know, given the time that we have left, I think it's going to be a matter of trying to really focus on, and I certainly now, after I say this point, will open it up to you to weigh in on. But I get the sense that, you know, it's really going to be focusing in on this, the spreadsheet that I had shared on the screen in terms of, you know, closing the gap as well as, and Bailey's working on a lot of the worksheets and things like that, the POCD update. So there's a lot of help that we can get from people like Bailey on, you know, that it's just a matter of closing some of those gaps. But then, you know, the potential action where we can get some additional credit and some of the kind of easier action items that we had from the original kind of Word document that the fellows had shared as well. Because, you know, at this point, to do something completely from scratch would be tricky to start now, especially given the fact that there's been this emphasis and what we keep hearing from the fellows, which is that it needs to be absolutely completed. It can't just be, you know, in process. So, and you know, I think while, I guess my last thing that I'll say is that while I know this is a big goal of ours to get Silver Certification, and I'm going to, you know, do my best to kind of figure out of what we have currently available, if we can get to that 400 points that will, you know, get us the Silver Certification, certainly. However, I think the goal of this committee was really to be forward-thinking. And so, you know, if at the end of the day, we do all these great things that next year, when we go through the process, then we actually have thought about this for the past year instead of, you know, we just started the committee and we're just kind of picking up the pieces of what the town has already been, what has already done. But I don't want to get too hung up, I guess, on the certification process because if we don't make it, you know, now we have like a roadmap for all the exciting things that we can do for next year. So I guess that's where I'm going to leave it. But I'll now turn it over to you, your thoughts on this whole process and where we stand in what I just said.
I appreciate that last thing you said, Alexis. I think it's good to put it in context. I mean, the goal is to make this place a better place. And certification is cool, but we started late. And I think spinning our wheels and getting like super overwhelmed with trying to get in by a date in a couple of weeks isn't really the point, although it would be nice, I suppose, especially if people have been working on it for a long time, like yourself. It sounds like there's people trying to do that. And, you know, I for one will help in any way possible. But I think setting our sights for next year, because to get Silver Certification is not just to get a plaque on a wall, it's to be sort of a quantitative way to show that we're making strides in the place where we live, and that's why we're doing this. So, good.
Agreed. I am, and things have to be really wrapped up and completed. I don't know that there's that much we can do by then. And I'm leaving on the 12th. When I signed up for the committee, I said I'd be gone most of August. Well, it's only about half of August instead. And I do want to meet with you, Alexis, before then. But I know I won't have things wrapped up. The Pollinator Pathway, for instance, the brochures that go to homeowners along the pathway will just be delivered tomorrow. The matching crowdfunding for the matching grant will go live right after that. So we've got a long way to go. And let's see, what number is it? 3.10, facilitate invasive education, putting information on the website. I've talked to Mike about 12 sheets on invasives that will be put up, but I don't know if the IT is going to get that done by the deadline either. So there isn't much that I've got in front of me that's going to get finished. It certainly won't get finished by the 12th, and I don't know if it'll get finished by the 24th.
Right, yeah. And that's, again, I think we'll do our best. And the fellows, I would say, to their credit, are really well organized. And I think they're going to, you know, last year, we had a little bit of a challenge with the fellow not being as kind of totally aware of how things work on the sustainable CT side. So they've been really helpful. But, you know, we'll do our best to collect. Again, this is very like kind of retroactive because everything has to be, have been completed. So we get what we get. And if we don't, you know, if we don't get there, then it's just a matter of, I think, I think what is helpful about this, and this is just personally, that going through all the action items makes me think at least about, you know, the ways that, like, it serves as inspiration. So even if we don't do it for this year, if we're kind of constantly maybe like checking back in as we move forward after the certification deadline and are thinking about, you know, the Sustainable Sustainability Committee, then it's just, oh, you know, like, they recommend that we do this and that's a great idea, just kind of serving as kind of a constant reinforcement and inspiration in terms of how we can actually codify something into a particular plan or a particular, you know, initiative or something like that. Like, for example, we're too late to take their diversity, equity, and inclusion training because it was something that, like, you had to have been signed. It went really quickly, like, we had to have signed up for it, like, in May or June or something like that. And, but they have one in the fall. And I'm on a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee at work, too. So like, it's definitely something, I had a meeting today on it. So it's something that, like, I want to just take, even if it doesn't have anything to do with this year's certification. So then, but yet, like, that's something that will have certification credit if, for next year. So like, you know, just constantly kind of be at least revisiting the action item list as we go along, even if we're not, like, it's not for the purposes of this year's certification cycle.
Good.
So I guess if, is there any updates from, you mentioned your updates in terms of you submitted the invasive species to the town, but you're not sure if they're going to get the, you know, the IT is going to get it up there in time. But is there anything else? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I had, I had told Mike that I wasn't sure I had it in a usable format, but I thought I could get it and found out I can't get it, but I think they can use what I've got. So I've been away all day today. So tomorrow I will get back to Mike on that. But then, no, I don't think the IT will get it set up in time. So that's, what is that? 3.10. The Pollinator Pathways, I'm not sure how much needs to be done for that, but it doesn't look like, I mean, if things have to be sort of completed, it doesn't look like that's going to be. And as far as the Community Match Fun Project, it won't go live till the end of this week. So that doesn't look like something either. So I don't know what I have. Yeah. But it's all things that are good. It's good for the town, there for next year. So we got it. We've got plans.
And I think I'm just looking at, it's 3.12, the Enhanced Pollinator Pathways. It says, "Provide education to residents and local businesses to improve pollinator habit." So if that brochure is going out this week, you said, and that's, that's an educational brochure, is that correct?
That's, that's the one that'll just go to residents along the pathway, which needs to go out before crowdfunding goes live. And I've got one that'd be available later. But I wasn't planning on doing that until I had money from the crowdfunding. It's going to pay for that later. But a second brochure. But the first brochure should go out this week. And the crowdfunding will go live this week.
I think, I think the, you know, and a lot of this is also, we sometimes submit things that we aren't sure if it's guaranteed to get credit. But, you know, we put it in anyway, just in case it's considered.
Right.
And so for that, you know, if an element of that action item is providing education and the brochure is going out, then as long as that action has taken place and which the brochure has been distributed, I feel like we can at least submit that and see if.
Even if it only goes to 30 houses.
Yeah, I think so. Because that's, that's, you know, education to residents. And because if they're along the pathway, I imagine that's kind of what you're trying to hone in on them being the best, you know, the ones that you really want to target. The other question, one of the elements is passing, so it's providing education, plant pollinator gardens, or pass a pollinator-friendly community resolution. And, Tula, do you happen to know about it? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I've asked Mike about the resolution. He hasn't gotten back to me. So I don't know where we.
Okay. Because I wonder how.
What was the question?
I was just curious, because I, you know, I'm not so experienced on the, how resolutions are passed. One of the options for the 3.12, which is the Enhanced Pollinator Pathways, is passing a pollinator-friendly community resolution. And so I wasn't sure what that would entail. I mean, could we, our committee, just vote on a resolution? Or is that, I'm sure it's much bigger than that, but I was just curious.
So what do you, what does that mean? Like, what do you mean by a pollinator resolution?
Well, if you go to pollinator-pathways.org, you can see examples. You click on the various towns and there's several there. It's a where as this, where as that, where as this, where as that, we do blah, blah. And the selectmen vote on it and sign it.
Oh, it's the selectmen who have to vote on it? Okay.
Oh, okay. So then they would have to put it on the agenda, under, under next meeting agenda?
Yeah.
Pretty feasible, right?
What's that?
Well, they have a, they have a meeting tonight. And when I got to Mike, I knew, I knew, when I talked to Mike, I knew it was too late because you got agendas have to be 24 hours ahead. It was yesterday. You know, it was too, it couldn't get done this week. They don't meet every week. So, no, I don't know if that's possible.
They are, they are going to meet next week, next Tuesday at 6:00. If we can get to Mike and ask him to add it to the agenda before Friday.
Yep, I haven't, I haven't answered it. But we'll see. I sent it yesterday, the request.
Okay.
And I talked to him, yes, or that, I talked to him earlier and then I sent that later.
Okay, I'm just taking notes on that. Okay, and then IT. Okay. And did I send you, Pat, I just wanted to be reminded if I provided you worksheet two for the collaboration with other municipalities?
Yeah, and I don't think I have anything for that. And then I was not able to do more recently to get it, get more meat in it. And everybody else is the same situation we are. They're trying to do last-minute things before August 24th.
Right, right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Sorry, go ahead.
But no, I, anything for that. It's not, not enough to make it there.
Okay, okay. Okay, John, do you, do you mind if I turn it over to you for an update? Because I did see the email correspondence that you had with Bailey. And I think, I think you were sending, setting up a meeting with her, is that correct?
Yeah, I talked to Bailey briefly. She sent me all the information I needed to contact the head of each department. The solar array review that I wanted due to see if we could increase the usefulness of the solar array. So I've got all the information. I've already sent out a couple of emails to the contacts. I'll continue to do that. And over the next week, I'll schedule some times to be able to walk the site to see if we can, see if there's a way to optimize the solar arrays. I also had a note in there for Jim Russell, the IT manager. And then, I'm not sure, this may be similar to what Pat's doing. The conversation was going to be, can we take a look at, and what would it take to develop the website to be able to have, you know, a weekly or a monthly update on sustainability initiatives for the town, creating links for emails to be, update people, things of that nature. So it's all in progress. It's not quite done yet to moving forward.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for the update. Anything else that anybody wanted to mention in terms of action, particular action items?
Yeah, so I had taken on, I think it's 7.7, the Community Energy Campaign, Implement, etc. So I talked to a few people at Eversource. I eventually got linked up with Energize Connecticut. And I printed out some things that I can maybe email over. I don't know if this is something that already, that someone's doing in the town already, but there is this Community Partnership for Energy Efficiency Engagement Initiative. It's essentially a program that is offered by Energize CT, which is sort of really just the energy companies come together with, you know, doing, doing good stuff or trying to do good stuff. And there's money available. So you apply for this program. And if you get accepted, there are grants and there are matching monies and things towards different energy efficiency programs. And I read through this a few times and it's incredibly unclear. And I emailed the gentleman who is supposedly in charge of it. And I emailed the gentleman who was in charge of it and I haven't heard back. But the deadline for application is the 20th of this month.
24.
No, no, the, no, for this.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Program, the application is the 20th. So I just want to run it by and see if this was on Mike's radar, because this is like, this is pretty, you know, I think big Connecticut stuff, so I can't imagine I'm the first person to find this. So before I sort of go through and invent the wheel, I want to see if that's something that's been done with the town at all or if Mike knows anything about it. And, but if not, then it seems like a really great thing. And again, you know, we apply by the 20th, clearly we're not going to hear back by the 24th, but it'd be a great thing. There's all these timings over the course. It's a year-long program. You know, there's check-ins along the way and all sorts of aspects of it that that we can use depending on, you know, what our need is. So there's, there's a ton here. It's probably a committee within a committee. But at least just start to see if it's something that the town wants to get involved in.
So you said it's called the Community Partnership for Energy, and then what's the last thing?
Efficiency Engagement Initiative. Community Partnership for Energy Efficiency Engagement Initiative. Rolls right up your tongue.
Community Partnership for Energy Efficiency Engagement Initiative. Okay, got it. Wow. Okay.
Brought to you by Connecticut.
I, that doesn't ring a bell. Anybody else heard of this before? I don't, I'm not aware of anything that we've done in this department, but I would have to check. Well, that sounds promising.
I think it sounds promising. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the other thing. I was going to, just kind of segue into the Community Match Grant Program. Pat, you already mentioned your, the pollinator pathways aspect of it. So is that something that is, it sounds like you've already, is underway. Did you talk to Abe at all and is it kind of formally approved by Sustainable CT or what stage is that in?
Well, I talked, I did talk to Abe and it's pretty much, pretty much will happen, yeah. The application's almost, almost live. I got to add a couple of pictures to it, but it's, yeah, it's almost there.
That's wonderful. And, and I did have conversate, I don't know if anybody circled up with you about this, about at the town, but I did talk to Mike and then I talked to Christine about the, you know, purely logistics of the money. And Christine was going to double check, I think with, I think she was going to check with Susan, but essentially they, they in theory were like, I don't see why it would be a problem to open a new bank account. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Abe, Abe was emailing or calling Mike about it and I haven't heard back.
Oh, so yeah, I spoke with Mike about it originally. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
So I was talking to Abe yesterday and, and working on, and then I was doing it this morning. And I had, he had, he had to go somewhere and before he could get back to me, I had to go to the dentist. But he, he said he was contacting Mike.
Okay. Yeah, I, I I talked to Mike about him. Oops, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I talked to Mike about a week ago about it and he said it shouldn't be an issue. But I talked to Christine yesterday about it and she thought in theory it should be fine, but she was just, just going to double check. But it would be easy enough in principle to just open a new account and then title it, you know, for that, that grant program. So I don't see why it will cause a problem, but she was just going to double check. So it sounds like everybody is, Christine's aware and Mike's aware from both you and I. So I think that's, it shouldn't be an issue. Well, that's great. That's, that's great that it's approved by Abe and it's good to go. John, you had been contemplating grant match programs for, or I should say match grant programs for solar arrays installed in town buildings as well as bike trail grant applications. So just wondering if you had further thoughts on that or where that stands?
Not a significant amount on the bike trail. I've already kind of covered where we are in the solar rain. But on the, the bike trail, based on some of the feedback I got, that there's some resistance to utilizing the town trails. I was looking at state trails within the town. There are opportunities to do it. I just haven't gotten very far with pursuing it with some of the department heads for the state to be able to look at possibly being able to provide improvements so that the trails on the state side can be utilized for bike trails. So just haven't gotten very far with it. I was able to identify the state trails. I just haven't followed up on it from, from that point.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Pat, anything else on pollinator pathways that you wanted to add? I mean, we've already talked a lot about it, but just wanted to give you another opportunity if there are any more updates or appeals.
No, I don't have anything else right now.
Okay. Okay, anything else that anyone would like to add or ask of the group?
I don't think so. Just to, I, I guess, so there are these things, these loose ends and cross Ts and dotted Is that it sounds like there are other people other than us working on. Is that accurate?
Yes, within, yes, exactly.
The handful of us, right, at this point?
Yeah, that Bailey is helping to kind of coordinate some of the information seeking that, you know, like, like document request type of stuff. So she's helping on that type of thing and filling in some of the worksheets and things of that nature. So I would say she's kind of my main point person to get stuff from within the town when we know it's already been done and we just need to kind of make, pull it all together and compile it.
Mosquitoes are coming, Alexis. Get down here.
Sorry?
mosquitoes are coming.
Oh, no. Well, it's good, it's good timing. What I'll maybe do, as I said, I'll, I'll share this Google Drive. If you maybe wouldn't mind, you know, kind of just going through it quickly. It's really, it's a bunch of tabs, but it's only a couple of actions on each tab for the most part. And just if it's something that you're directly working on, if you don't mind just putting on the column M is role of sustainable CT checkboxes and it's, says sign up. So if you don't mind just putting your name there, so just for when I'm going through it, it's kind of for my tracking of like, okay, who's working on this? So I'll take its first path at it, but if you don't mind just kind of like sticking your name next to it if applicable. And then, yeah, I think that's basically it. We'll reconvene and see where things stand the next meeting. But there's no public, so I will, in an effort to save you from mosquitoes, motion to adjourn.
Can we verify our next meeting?
Sure, yes. So I have it as, I want to say August, I want to say it's August 10th.
I think so, next Tuesday.
August 10th at 7:00. So it is set as Zoom, but does what are, do we want to attempt a Q and A in my home life, Thomas, or do we want to just have a Zoom?
I mean, I can say, oh, not yet. My experience is that it's been nice having Pat right here and like seeing somebody and having a conversation. I think there was some benefit in that, but you know, we get, we move things along. I was listening to the radio on the way in, I was looking at Marketplace on NPR and they were talking about Zoom meetings. And the guy, the woman or whoever said essentially, you know, remote meetings are not as good, but they're sort of good enough, you know, like 80%, 85% and that's how it sort of feels. They're not as good, but they're good enough. So whatever works for everybody else, I guess is a long-winded way of saying that.
I can, yeah, I can be either way.
Well, why don't I, I'll put it as a Q at Farm meeting and then I'll bring my laptop and hotspot and for anybody who's unable to can dial in or Zoom in.
Promise?
So sorry.
Just kidding. Love you. You're the best.
I owe you a coffee or beverage of choice or something. I'm sorry.
Fine, don't worry about it. It's all good. I am too. I'm amazed. So new. I'm only, yeah, it was 20%. All right, motion to adjourn or what?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, have a good evening, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye.